I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of December 17, 2012. I'd like to begin with a silent meditation in salute to the flag. I'd like to have this silent meditation in honor of the new town Connecticut victims. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First up is the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled?
Yeah, the December 2012 meeting.
Anything else? David, anything?
No. Sylvia, maybe?
Just that one thing that needs to be corrected is that page nine, the motion which
made in adjournments in memory of May Champlin Helenet, which in Gregory Providence made by myself and seconded by Councilor Babacapalv. With that exception, I move the minutes being adopted as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first, public forum. Anyone out there wishing to speak? Next up on the agenda is the Town Council President Report. I had put a couple items on here, first of which was the tax amnesty program that the state around had. And I learned about this by listening to the radio quite a bit, and they, the state had a 75-day window where if anyone was delinquent on their state income tax, property tax, relative to beverage and meals tax or hotel tax, they would waive penalties and allow you to pay up to avoid some penalties, basically. And they would waive some principal, too. So what piqued my interest was when I heard this, it was to the tune of $17 million. And I said, geez. And then after the Department of Taxation person that was on the radio had mentioned that some of it was coming back to the towns and cities. So I proceeded to call the Division of Taxation and find out exactly what would be coming back. And they reported that any hotel or meal tax, beverage and meal tax or hotel tax that was in our town would be coming back to us if it was paid by a person through this plan. So I sent an email to a Jacques Moreau, who's going to look into it and see what, if any, monies that may be coming back to Hopkinton. It's not a lot of money. Basically, the beverage and meal tax statewide was only $19,000, and the hotel tax was only $28,000. So I'm not expecting hardly any money, but it just, like I said, what piqued my interest was the amount of money that the state collected through this program. The last time that they had it was in 2006, they only collected just under $10 million. So anyway, so more to follow on that, but I don't anticipate a whole heck of a lot coming to us. The next is the League of Cities and Towns has an annual convention Wednesday, June, excuse me, Wednesday, January 30, 2013. It had a lot of interesting seminars. I think that some of us would probably be wise to maybe take, partake in. I'm not sure if anyone, I wanted to throw it out to see if anybody read the newsletter from the League of Cities and Towns and if they were interested.
The town managers made a reservation themselves already.
Okay, yeah. There was a few. Bill, anybody from town government, I guess, that seeked an interest in? I know there were a bunch of seminars that seemed related to what, you know, some of the department heads might be interested in, but I wasn't sure.
I can always send out a supplemental email and see if anybody's interested.
Okay.
But I think as far as the past, I was here last year, and you just show up to the seminar you want to, and you don't really register for a seminar, I don't believe, do you, Bill?
I think the registration is really for, like, the breakfast and lunch, so they don't need people to come. I think that the individual workshops, not overly crowded, you just show up and attend.
And then lastly, under my heading here is the 1215 report. Myself, Tom Gents from Charlestown, and Joe Reddish from Richmond had met with Barry Ritchie this past Saturday at his office to kind of go over, I guess, anything that we wanted to go over, and him to give us a heads-up on what his office has been involved in. And I walked away with a lot of information, a lot of good stuff, some stuff I'm cautiously optimistic on. I guess they've pretty much finished their budget. The only big asterisk next to this budget is the salaries, I guess, haven't been finalized. That's 75 to 80 percent of their budget. The regional bonus, I guess, that Charahoe used to receive, has been eliminated. What Barry Ritchie wanted us to do was to maybe send some letters to the state to try and get that regional bonus back. It's been reduced from 2 percent to 1 percent to zero. I found out that the Charahoe Building Committee, I guess, is wrapping up this week. I guess the project's pretty much done. The good news is it was under budget by about $1 million, so it's less money that we borrowed. And let's see, and also, too, I guess, which I didn't know, was our debt service amount that we pay is only 56, excuse me, 44 percent of the cost, which is very good. The state reimburses us 56 percent. And the other big budget-related item that Barry Ritchie went over was the, because of the campus project was so expensive, and they're pretty much done with it, their capital improvement, part of their budget's really going to be only, like, only $7 to $9 million versus the $15 or $18 million it was before, so that's about it. There was one thing that he mentioned, which I'm not quite sure of how that's going to unfold. They're not sure yet, but there's going to be a big technology wave at the schools next year, mainly the high school, grades 10, 11, and 12. They're going to try to, with the, I guess there was a $20 million bond that was passed, education or technology bond, last year from the state, they're going to try and get the grades 10, 11, and 12 to have paperless homework, digital lesson plans, and basically, they're going to, they're not sure what type of device they're going to buy, but it's going to either going to be an iPad, and essentially, it's going to go home with these kids. They're going to have these digital plans and be able to kind of do everything electronically, so more to come on that as to what device they're going to use. Now, mainly, we were concerned, I think, initially hearing this, that, you know, what happens if they break it? They get two chances to mess up, you know, their device. If it's after twice, then they have to pay for it themselves, so. And also, too, a lot of the sites will be blocked, of course, that was another question that came up, and they won't have access to a lot of the internet sites that they would probably want to have access to. So, but anyway, I walked away with a lot of knowledge, and it was interesting to meet with him and to hear some of the things that are going on with Charahoe, and I welcomed more meetings with him, so. Anybody have any?
Yeah, I just have a comment, you know, it's interesting, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have the Charahoe Omnibus Meeting, and usually, the omnibus meeting is always criticized, a lot of people think, you know, it doesn't really amount to anything. But at the very least, I would hope there's a meeting of the council president after the omnibus meeting to talk about the omnibus meeting and whether or not there's going to be any traction or any ideas there, or is it just going to be, you know, venting of different ideas and nothing accomplished? And the agenda for the omnibus meeting has several ideas, a number from Hopkinton, and I would hope that the council presidents would meet with the superintendent after that to have a recap on the omnibus meeting. That's just a thought I have.
Yeah, makes sense, yeah.
I've got a question on the, let's see, the item in reference to, what was the last one?
Oh, the technology?
Oh, that's right, yeah. That's something that actually has been, they've been kicking around for a while. I know, I know our Hopkinton representatives have actually been pushing for it, and immediately you think, oh, just what's that going to cost? But the thinking was that there should be less cost on the textbooks. That's the intent.
Right.
Eventually, eventually, that, you know.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up.
That's where you get your cautiously optimistic, I'm sure.
Right, right. Well, just to put it in perspective, one textbook, I guess, typically costs about $95. This, I guess, the least lesson plan is only $15. So it's a huge difference in cost. And what's nice is when they're online, they can be updated quickly, any new information can be updated quickly, you don't have to wait for a new book to be published, so. Should be, should be creative savings, I'm hoping, and I'm just nervous, though, kids taking these devices home, they're expensive, and hopefully, they won't get damaged, so.
Frank, did he say how many devices are going to be purchased?
Well, from my understanding, Dave, all three grades are going to get a chance at this, so however many kids are in 10th, 11th, and 12th.
Did he give you an idea what the cost was going to be?
No, no, because it's part of that bond that was passed, I guess, by the state. Each district will get a certain amount of that $20 million education bond, so I don't know that it'll cost us anything.
If that covers it?
Right, yeah. That was my understanding, anyway. But, you know, we'll see how it goes. They're not quite sure, like I said, what device they're going to pick. They have some RFPs going out to various Dell, Apple, to find out which ones they're going to settle on, so.
Did he, did he also give you an idea, short of the teacher's salaries, what the increase or what the price of the rest of the budget's going to be this year?
No, the only thing that he really mentioned was the capital improvement part of the budget, which typically is a fair amount. It's going to be greatly reduced because of the projects that they've already completed, so. So I was happy about that, but, you know, he said that, you know, this budget was pretty much finalized, but the salaries piece isn't finalized, and that, I said, well, how much is that? And he said it's 75 to 80 percent, so who knows? You know, I just hope that it's something we can deal with and be able to live with and not have any tax increases, so, anyway.
Right.
Anybody else, yes? Next on the agenda is the Town Manager Report. Bill McGee.
Thank you. On December 4, I attended a bid opening that was held at the Town Hall. The council chambers are regarding the purchase and installation of a fuel distribution management system at DPW. Four bids were received and are currently being evaluated by DPW Director Tim Teft, who's going to then submit a recommendation to me and ultimately to the Town Council, explaining which company was selected and the reasons for the selection. We should bring that before the council sometime in January. To go along with that, we're also preparing documentation that justifies a small increase in the price per gallon paid by nonprofit agencies for town gasoline. All those numbers have been compiled, and it's just a matter of piggybacking that together with the fuel distribution bid award and doing those at the same time. The small increase will be used to offset the cost of the system over a 20-year period. We also did some preliminary numbers on the cost of gasoline, and although it's still not finalized yet, it still appears that when we went out to bid for gasoline locally, it's still going to be a little bit cheaper than going with a state master price agreement, basically because of the per-delivery charge to get the gasoline down here, so. We still haven't finalized that, but we should do that within the next couple of days. December 4, I also met with Kirk Maynard, an attorney for Sultus Energy, and Kevin McDonald, who's a local business owner in town, regarding the possible future installation of a ground-based solar panel site on Bank Street. Still in the very, very preliminary stages, they haven't even developed a site plan yet, but we met and walked the entire eight-acre site in the late afternoon. Sultus Energy has hired a local attorney to represent its interests in the matter, and that land is currently sown to RFR 80, so, again, that's still in its infancy stages. During the last couple of weeks, I spent a significant amount of time working in preparation of the upcoming FY14 budget. Town Clerk Lisa Martin and I revised the grants and contributions request form, which I forwarded to all of the nonprofit groups that were funded during the last fiscal year with a deadline date of January 11, 2013. Forms are currently on file in the finance office, the town clerk's office, and my office for any other requesting nonprofit groups. I also submitted dates for the townwide department goal submissions, the subsequent meeting to discuss and prioritize those goals, and the individual department head budget discussions to the town solicitor for the annual budget timetable document. The FY 2014 annual and multi-year goals for individual departments must be in my office by December 21. The goals that we request are generally, have to be practical, attainable, affordable, and measurable, and basically, they provide direction toward what projects are important to us that we would like to see accomplished during the next fiscal year on the annual goals and the future years ahead on the multi-year goals. What they do is they provide a nice introductory lead into the next budgetary process, and once compiled, these proposed goals are scheduled to be submitted to the council members for their review, evaluation, and subsequent approval. And lastly, December 12, I attended the zoning board review meeting in the Town Hall Council Chambers regarding the transfer of the AZ Corporation operations from North Stonington into the vacant Renova Lighting Building on Wells Town Road in Hopkinton. Over the last several weeks, I've spoken to CEO Perry Lorenz many times and referred him to the various proper personnel and departments to ensure a smooth transition from North Stoning to Connecticut to Hopkinton. And the town solicitor's office and the building zoning department have been very helpful and taken primary roles in facilitating this transition. And at that meeting, they approved, they approved the aquifer permit for AZ Corporation, so. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Could I just follow up on one thing Bill mentioned? You're going to have your budget timetable for your next meeting, and we'll make a request at that time that you schedule it on the agenda so that you can schedule your budget here.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Okay, next on the agenda under the new business is the request of the land trust for discussion regarding their status as a municipal land trust, issues surrounding their financial commitments and legal services. So whoever wants to take the podium?
I just want to thank you.
Could you please go to the mic, please? Thank you.
Was this good?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thanks the council for taking the time to put us on the agenda. A couple of weeks ago, I had sent you a report with an update of?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Marilyn Grant, Chair of the Hopkinton Land Trust.
David Bosman.
Sorry. And I had sent a report of, with an update on some of our projects as far as public access to land trust properties and some of the other activities, and also had included a request to have a discussion workshop with you of some kind regarding, in particular, our legal representation. And Mr. Ed Wood from the board has taken on the project and investigated some issues with other land trusts in the state, and he's going to take it from here.
Okay, thanks, Marilyn.
Hi, excuse me, Ed Wood, been a member of the land trust since its inception. Yeah, I think we just wanted to come before the board and clarify some issues in that the previous town council had notified us that we would no longer be able to avail ourselves of the services of the town solicitor. We thought, you know, that that, we'd like to discuss that issue in that we feel that we are, we are a board and commission of the town like other boards or commissions, and that we should be able to use the town solicitor for various legal matters that we have, as we have since we were formed almost 12 years ago. And it's a little concerning that sort of after 12 years, where a project, that a press process that has seemed to work very well would need to be changed. In order to get some background on that, you know, I did check with all the other municipal land trusts in the state. They all are either required to or do have access to town solicitor, except for two. There are two land trusts in the state that have a certain, sort of, different kind of status, which is the land trust in Block Island and the land trust in Little Compton, which were lucky enough to get a special tax on land transfers, and of course, both communities have, you know, land, property values are the highest in the state in those two communities, I think, and they get a certain percentage of every land sale to use for land trust work, and it amounts to, has amounted to more than $1 million every year since they started, and in some years, two or $3 million. So of course, they've, it's a much kind of, different kind of operation, and they've retained a separate solicitor from the town. But all the other, there are 13, about 13, and so the other 11 all use town solicitors, and we, you know, we think that Hopkinton, you know, isn't that much difference from the other towns. Again, we don't understand why we wouldn't use them. And the third issue is that we just don't have funds, as, you know, we used to get a reasonable budget amount of money from the town budget, and now we're getting a token amount, I think $11,000 a year, last few years, which would, you know, if we went out and hired our own legal counsel, would go, you know, within a matter of months, probably, and we wouldn't have money to do anything else from an administrative point of view. So for all these reasons, we thought we'd like to have some clarification. It has been noted that, I think, in a letter we received, that there's some, you know, there's a feeling that there could be a conflict between, a conflict of interest between the town council and the land trust. Again, I, you know, in thinking it through, I don't understand why there's any more. Well, one issue is we've been going for 12 years, there's never been a conflict. There's at least 11 other municipal land trusts that have never had an issue where they needed a conflict. Some of them much more active and for a longer period than us, so we don't, you don't really see that a conflict is possible, but if it is, and that, you know, if we ever did for some reason have a conflict, then we could discuss how, you know, if separate legal councils are needed, how that could be handled, but we think if there's any conflict, it would be, you know, some sort of policy conflict, not a legal conflict. And I don't understand why we both need to sort of lawyer up to work out a problem between the land trust and the town council. We can't sit down and work it out, you know, we'd be failing as public officials, I think. And we, you know, I don't see, I mean, there could be differences of opinion, I guess, between the town council and the land trust, but there can be differences of opinions between the town council and any other board and commission, and we don't seem to be in need for, you know, for dueling solicitors or dueling councils, and those kind of disagreements in the last several hundred years or however long Hopkinton's been operating as a town. And so that, you know, that's sort of the case that we'd like to bring before the council, mainly, we think it's, I mean, we've really enjoyed working with the current solicitor. We think that they've given us very good service. We don't think we've burdened them with very much work, and we think it's to the town, you know, what we do is for the town, not for any other sort of separate entity, and we think it's wise for the town to have the same solicitor rather than have us sort of off on our own from a legal point of view, doing whatever we wanted to.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, that's all.
Is anybody else from your?
My only presentation.
Anyone else from your group wish to speak? What's that?
The second one he says.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Carol Baker. I live in Ashaway. I've been on the land trust along with Ed since its inception in 2000. I think the biggest, we're blessed in Hopkinton that we have a municipal land trust, and I think it's important for the new member of the town council to understand, we are a municipal land trust. We are the same as the planning board or the zoning board. We are a board and commission of the town. We're not the South Keentown Land Trust, we're not the Westerly Land Trust with all the huge amounts of money we have. We are a municipal land trust. We purchase or either fee simple or easements property on behalf of the town, and the town is the owner of that property. We've gotten numerous amounts of land grants for trail work and for land acquisition. When we were first formed, we were given $250,000 by the town to start. Since then, in the first couple of years, we received 100 percent of the real estate transfer fee came from the town to fund the land trust. We all know that fiscal environments have really been tough for everyone, and over time, that money has decreased. So for a couple, three, four years, we got 50 percent of the land, of the real estate land transfer fee. We now get 0 percent from the town. We came before the town council last year requesting a small amount of money just to assist us in our, in our work, and because of the tough fiscal situation, and I pay taxes, I don't want to pay more taxes either. We're all taxpayers. But we feel that we're kind of in a hard spot right now. We're not getting, besides the $1,200 operating expenses from the town, we're not getting any monies from the town. We do have money in several different accounts that we have all gotten from open space bonds that the voters of Hopkinton have voted for us to use for land acquisition. We feel it would be unethical to use these money to pay for legal fees, which are mostly for your basic, you know, sales and purchase agreements, or just for basic real estate. John McCoy has been absolutely great working with us. He's gotten stuff to us in a timely manner, and we're really pleased with his work. So we feel that we're really all only asking for the same treatment and respect as the other boards and commissions in the town, and for the ability to use the town solicitor for when we need it. And if there is a rare occasion that there would become a conflict of interest, then we would, of course, if needed, go out and use our funds to pay for that solicitor. But as Ed had said, that hasn't happened in 12 years. So we're just a little bit confused as to why, what has changed between the first 11 years and now that the town council, or the previous town council felt the need for us to get our own independent council. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Wood? Oh, okay. I guess anyone else wish to speak from the land trust? Okay. Scott?
I wrote a prayer to Sylvia, and then I would like to speak after. I know she was making some notes. I got a couple of notes, so pray to Sylvia.
Okay, Sylvia.
All right. Couple of things that, this is the first time it's been aired publicly, so I'll recap a couple of things. One problem, I'm not, I know the issue of a conflict was brought up, and I suppose something could happen in the future, and if any point in the past it had come up, we'd have to deal with it. So I'm, I'm not so, you know, concerned about doing this just because of a potential or possible conflict someday, but I could see where it might come up. But the practical problem was that when we hired the firm that we currently have six years ago, we negotiated with them as to their duties and what they'd be covering for a certain amount, and so the land trust wasn't part of the negotiation at the time. So that's one point. Another point is that the millions that have been appropriated for the land trust, you can use as you see fit. If you use some of that to hire a solicitor or to hire staff or to put up fences or to do whatever it is you need to do, and there's a cost to it, you can access your own money and spend it as you see fit. Those are just a couple of points I wanted to bring up. The other issue that you just brought up, the one about the, I don't know, they call it realty stamps or tax stamps?
Tax stamps.
That, that was something that we had asked, a letter that went out from the last council had asked you if you would pursue that, and if you would develop language that you think was appropriate, let the council know what it is. We could forward this to the legislative body, request that they add this to a ballot, a future election, so that they would add some minor amount to the, to the, to the amount that's currently collected. That amount would, the additional amount would- That amount would, the additional amount would be given to the land trust so that you would have forever, assuming the voters would pass it. And I don't think, see why they wouldn't, because they have passed every single thing that the land trust has asked for. So that's something that regardless whoever upstate or anyone else thinks is a bad idea because of the economy, down here in Pompkin, we know that that money would go directly to you. So I think the voters would, I think they'd be receptive to it regardless of what somebody else may think. So I'd like to see that developed so that you can get that revenue source every year. Other than that, I did make some notes prior to tonight, which I'd like to read. The Pompkin Land Trust does not have equal status to other Pompkin boards and commissions. Like no other board or commission, the Pompkin Land Trust was legislatively constituted as a body corporate and politic, the same language used to create municipalities. Specifically, they have control over their own finances and contracts. They may hire legal counsel, take in funds and spend them without any accounting to the town, enter into contracts, hold land in its, in its own name, purchase property and goods and hire staff. To sum up, the Pompkin Land Trust is not an arm of the town government. Instead, it is an independent body that acts for itself and is a self-governing and separate corporation. I would only agree to your request to have the land trust treated like other boards and commissions if the members of the land trust gave up its independent status through a new legislative action that would allow the town to control its finances and enter into contracts and hire staff and those things, just like we do with all the other boards and commissions. In other words, if you give up your independent status and the land trust becomes an arm of the town council, like all the other boards and commissions, while I, while I say that, I, I, I don't recommend it. And I would only consider what you recommend or what you're requesting tonight if you did an action like that, which I think is not in the best interests of, of the town or what it is you're trying to pursue. I see it as, as separate. And that's something that should come up only if you're unable to meet your responsibilities. And from what I see so far, there haven't been problems, you're meeting responsibilities. What we want you to do is take your responsibilities and control it. You really are an independent body, you really do have a great deal of authority and we'd like you to use it. We don't want you to give it up, but we want you to use it. So I guess that's about it. Other than that, we do have Barbara's letter to read tonight, too.
Yes, thanks, ma'am. Scott, you want to go ahead and?
Yes, I am the liaison to the land trust and I look forward to going to my first meeting. We just did after the council was just won and we did decide on what groups we represent. The land trust is a very important part, I'm very proud that I was on the council. I created the land trust several years ago and I actually been on one of their walks, at least one of their walks. My concern is the, and we were briefed by a legal counsel privileged, but nonetheless, I appreciate the work, Scott, that went into her perspective to the town council. The thing that concerns me is the conflict aspect in two ways, that if, I think the conflict arises if the council disagrees with something the land trust wants to do on acquiring property or there is a possibility there could be a conflict. And that is one concern that I have. It might never happen, but also when you develop a budget, and this council is going to be developing a budget in the next couple of months, that the council will have to look at the amount of money that the land trust gets of their finances. If it's really low, because I would imagine if they did choose to employ a legal counsel, they're going to have to have at least some money. And I would imagine a legal counsel would have to go to all their meetings and I want to keep an open mind on this as far as administration, but the land trust is a very positive thing. But I want to read the enabling legislation, section six, number D, and this is the trust shall have the power to, we get down to number D, it says, "Employ counsel, auditors, engineers, appraisers, private consultants, advisors, secretaries or other personnel needed to perform his duties within the limits of available funds." So that would question the council's ability when we do develop a budget or we let them have to transfer stamps, so how much money they generate from that and how they can conduct their business. But apparently the, is explained to us by our legal counsel and I'm not going to get into, you know, the thing is that the land trust is explained to the council by our legal counsel is that they don't have the same status as another board, they actually have a superior status. In the context of their ability to do things, that they're not accountable to the council. The council only has the power to, power of appointment, but as far as what piece of property they choose to buy or anything of that nature, council cannot interfere. We certainly have a role in their budgets and things of that nature, but I'm really interested.
I'm sorry, Scott, did you say you have a role in their budgets?
Don't we have a role?
No, you do not.
Don't we have a role as far as what they get in the town budget annually?
Yeah, but that's your budget, that's not their budget.
No.
What you give them is up to you.
Yeah.
But you don't have any.
No, I realize that. I probably misspoke when I said that.
Okay.
I misspoke when I said that and what I meant was our budget when we choose to give money to board.
Fine, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
And maybe I misspoke unconsciously or consciously or whatever, but I think this is a very interesting case because the council has been advised that a relationship of the land trust is not similar to any other board or commission and which puts the council in an interesting position. But I'm concerned as a councilman, number one, is how do they address their legal matters? And it would appear that there's a possibility, not that it would happen frequently, that could be a possible conflict if there's a disagreement between the land trust and the council. And, but right there, if you read the act which has been passed by the general assembly that clearly states they can employ counsel, number D, section six of the Enabling Act. So I'm just interested in hearing more information.
Yeah.
David.
Frank, a couple of points. Okay, if you don't mind, Pat, do you have any idea of the number of hours or time that a firm is used in working with or answering questions from the land trust?
I don't, David. John McCoy at the office typically takes care of that. It varies considerably, in other words, I think early in our tenure, they were buying property and you can imagine that there's a fair amount of work that goes into that. It's been, as far as I know, it's been isolated issues, you know, sort of here and there since that land purchase was accomplished, so.
Can we ball pocket? Can we say five to ten or ten to twenty dollars, something like that? Can we?
Uh.
Because.
Honestly, I'd be guessing.
It's, it's, it's hard to say, say no, they shouldn't use our legal services if it's an hour a year. It's, it's certainly is something else if they use twenty hours a year or fifteen hours a year that's certainly not what was, was part of your contract with us. So that's why I'm asking, you know, do we have an idea? Is this a serious situation or is this once a month they call you for ten minutes?
Like you said, it can vary. It doesn't even, it's not even necessarily once a month. You know, for instance, right now, I don't even think it's once a month. I don't know that they've got a whole lot going on. If there's a transaction going on, then it's a lot more than twenty hours in a, in a year.
Okay. So it could be, it could be considerable at times.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think the land trust has done a wonderful job and I think it's a wonderful organization. I think the land trust has to understand though, and I think the word Scott's looking for, and I'll use the word is autonomous. You have a lot of autonomy. You, you want the planning board, the zoning board that has to answer to the town more often than not. More often than not, you don't have to answer to anything. If you, if you take the money that you have from whatever sources and you purchase, or you want to purchase a piece of property and we as the council or the town in general feels that that's not a good idea, you can still go ahead and purchase the property and that's the way it is. If you're using our legal resources as support for that purchase and we feel we should use our legal resources as of being opposed to that, there's, there's a potential conflict right there. This is one of the ideas of where we can see a conflict. So I, I think you should have legal representation, but I'm certainly not sure whether it should be Pat Buckley or members of a firm.
Thanks, David. I just wanted to read a letter from councilperson Capalbo. She's not here tonight. She included this in our packet, says, "Land trust solicitor. Land trust solicitor needs by its very definition to be solicitous. Our council solicitor's firm is chosen for their prosecutorial talents for the police, building and zoning grievances and lawsuits against the town and its citizens. We do not choose this firm for its environmental negotiations or real estate abilities. Abilities needful for the land trust in negotiations with landowners, nonprofit organizations and partners, DEM and state agencies. We also have the option and ability to change law firms every two years or fire at will. Not very useful for a long-term agency like the land trust. Changing attorneys midstream during negotiations may be difficult, not efficient or efficient, Barbara's using these words again, or efficacious for the work of this organization. The land trust does not hold land in trust for itself, it holds this property in trust for the citizens of Pompkin who have paid for the privilege of acquiring public lands for both active and passive recreation, for the continuance of farm and forest, for the good of the natural world around us. The present two bonds, one for one million dollars and the other for two million dollars, given by the people of Pompkin is for this use. These bonds will actually involve one and a half million and three million over the twenty-year repayment period. My understanding, and this may indeed be arguable, is that this was not just for the buying of land, but for the preservation and use of the, of this land for the good and for the needs of the citizens of Pompkin, for trails, dog and horse walks, boat landings, fish, fishing, picnic and swimming areas, to include wetland mapping, invasive species recognition, perhaps wildflower introduction. All these monies are given by the citizens to the land trust with respect and hope for the future and knowing that they will be, that they will use these funds for the highest and best use in all aspects of land acquisition and development. The hiring of the best solicitor that you need is in your hands, not the council or, for that matter, the public. Your choice can be for as long as you need or as long as you'd like. It is not up to any of us to determine that choice. I wish to keep it that well, excuse me, I wish to keep it that way. Respectfully yours, Barbara Capalbo, Pompkin Town Council." So, what was that?
Did I just respond to?
Yeah, I just wanted to recap just a quick thing, Mr. Wood, if you don't mind. You know, the legislation passed in 2000 really does separate you from any other board and commission from the town by that legislation. You're a separate entity, you're autonomous, you can do whatever you wish, you don't have to report to us. Now, I understand that you have some attorney needs perhaps, but I think we've asked in prior councils, if you guys could come up with a funding source, we'll be happy to take it to the next step if you need to. If you want to look at those realty tax stamps again, we'd be happy to do that. But, you know, when, when the solicitor's office was hired, they were only hired for town council meetings, planning and zoning board meetings, that's it. So, you know, we can't ask them to, and again, the conflict certainly would come up if any issues come up with, with buying land that we don't see fit as a council. There's a huge conflict there, but I just think you need to try and get some funding sources. You're totally separate, I just don't agree with that, the thought process that you think you're the same as any other board and commission, you're absolutely not in any way, shape or form by, by, by this legislation that was passed in 2000, so. So that's my two cents, but.
Can I add a couple more points?
Sure.
One thing I, I didn't get into and the, I know that this past year, for whatever reason, the solicitor's office went into what I call, or has gone into this year, into deficit. They've worked more hours than we're, than we're paying them and it was a considerable The, the problem is, and even though they did that, there are still some things that didn't get done. There were, there weren't emergencies, but there were things that we, quite frankly, I know I really wanted to see get done. There was some work that needed to be done in reference to ordinances that would benefit our town, but they just couldn't get it all done. And there's been a request, for instance, from the tax collector, I keep thinking about that one, that Rita has made, and I think it was three or maybe four years ago, there was something that she wanted us to do similar to what Wesley's doing in reference to the collection of taxes. And it would have benefited our town, but it required research and an ordinance change and when it comes to that, what I have to say is the solicitor's very thorough. And I'm sure that's why you like them. They're accessible, they answer the phone, they're thorough, they're good. And the problem is that the amount of hours that we can come up every now and then that you need takes away, again, from all the things that are still not getting done. So I want you to understand that it's, that's, that in my mind, that's the real problem. If we had unlimited resources, from my point of view, I'm not so worried about the conflict. But Barbara Capalbo brought up a very good point. Now, the solicitor's hasn't changed, but every two years they could. So if you have your own, you pick your own, you can keep your own as long as you want. That's your, that's your right and your business, so.
Frank, Frank, what's the, if you don't mind, I'd ask Pat again. Pat, am I under the understanding that the work done for the land trust is either off the, off the books or it's, it's gratis or something like that? Or do you charge, do you charge the town for those hours and is that why we're in deficit?
The town's.
Or are we, are we in deficit simply because we're in deficit, not even including the land trust work?
The town's not in deficit. We get paid a stipend.
Right.
An annual stipend. What we do fits within that stipend.
Right.
Included within that are certain things, like I attend two council meetings a month. Scott goes to the planning board once a month. Todd goes to the zoning board once a month. Now, what happens is we have work that has got to be done. So if there's a requirement that the council meet more than twice a month, I'm here. If there's a requirement that the planning board meet more than once a month, Scott goes. If the zoning board has a special meeting, Todd goes. We don't, we try very hard not to say, heck no, we've, we've reached our limit for this month.
Right.
In fact, I don't think I've ever said that to anybody in the town. We can't do that because, you know, we've reached our limit. The amount of time that we give to the town on a monthly basis generally is a little over a hundred hours a month because we keep, everything we do, we keep our time. Every lawyer who works on anything for the town keeps their time.
Including land trust?
Everything.
Okay.
Yes. So we go through and we keep all our time. It amounts to a little over a hundred, a hundred hours a month. That's, that means that we would be net about, it's, it's under a hundred and twenty dollars an hour basically for what we do. I bill for other than townwork, two hundred dollars an hour. So what we do is we take it on the chin for the difference basically between those amounts. The more time we put in, the less amount we're getting per hour.
Right.
And that's, that's our choice in the sense that we signed up for the, for the stipend and we try to get everything we need to do for the town done within that stipend. We obviously can't give it a hundred percent of our time. That wouldn't make financial sense. We couldn't do it if we gave it a hundred percent of our time. So things have to give and we have to prioritize, but I don't want you to think that the town somehow goes into deficit over this. It doesn't. It just, it's the way.
No. I'm following up on what Sylvia said, that certain things don't get done simply because we're running up a lot of legal time.
Right.
And I'm wondering whether some of that legal time that we're running up is because of a, the land trust's requests for legal services.
It can be. It can also be because Scott right now has been dealing with an appeal to SHAB from a planning board decision. And he had to do a seventy-five page brief for SHAB. So in a given month, you know, it could be any one of the issues that we have to prioritize that would push other things aside.
So this is why I was asking you if you, if you have an idea of what kind of time the land trust is asking you, has asked you for?
Currently, not much.
Okay.
Honestly, currently not much. Like I said, when there's a land transaction going on, when we first came in and there was a land transaction going on. was a land transaction going on, it was a lot. You know, and a lot of stuff that I would say frankly to John McCoy, John, that's clerical stuff you're doing. You know, people have a tendency to ask a person to do it who can get it done, no matter what it is. And I'd say, John, we can't be eating this time. We can't keep eating this time month after month. You've got to shift some of those responsibilities to the people at the land trust who have the time to do it. You don't. You know, it's not typically legal work, or whatever it was. And so, and he has a hard time saying no, and he loves working with the land trust. He's on the land trust incumbent, you know, and he's got an interest in it, he loves working with me, loves the people he's worked with on the land trust. They're great people, it's a great organization. You know, but it's tough to balance. You know, right now, currently, there isn't very much. One of my concerns for the land trust is that it be utilized as it should be utilized, which is this independent, amazingly independent organization that's unheard of in town, basically. I mean, we have no other board or commission that has the kind of authority that the land trust does. And it seems to me, looking historically at it, because when this initially came up, I had to go back through all of the records of the land trust and look at how it developed, that nobody's really sat down and appreciated the independent status of the land trust before. You know, there were two amendments to the legislation that were completely unnecessary because the land trust already had that authority within the original legislation. Nobody obviously really took a hard look at it and figured that out. You know, it's such a unique organization, and it's got so much authority that it doesn't use, and that I'm not sure anybody fully appreciates. And I'd like to see them have someone, you know, when Sylvia and Bill and I met with Marilyn and Tom Thompson a year or so ago, I said to them, if I was your lawyer, I would be so jealously guarding your independent authority, not trying to align myself more closely with the other boards and commissions in town, because it's got so much fabulous authority that it could be using, and I just don't really, I just, I'd like to see someone helping them along that path.
Just for clarification for David, Mr. McCoy was getting, he was billing them by the hour, it wasn't coming out of our, right?
He has been for the last few months that the council's decision was that they not have solicitor services. Before that, we were not. So, for the last five years, whenever they've not been given, no, no, no.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we want to, you know, we're all busy. We don't want to extend this discussion just for the sake of argument, but if I could just make a couple of points. I mean, we would love to have, as every municipal land trust in the state would love to have access to realty tax stamps. You know, we did, after discussion, we did look into that possibility fairly, you know, with a lot of detail, and talked to several of the other land trusts in the state, talked to some legislators, talked to the land trust council. And, you know, over the years, over the last 10 to 15 years, there's been numerous attempts to get the legislature to authorize various towns to fund land acquisition with tax stamps. The only time it's ever been successful was with Little Compton and Block Island. That was successful, I mean, to get that, for Block Island to get that, there was a gentleman on Block Island that was enough interested in it that for two general assembly sessions in a row, he registered as a lobbyist. He moved into a hotel in Providence for the legislative session, and he lobbied full-time for two years, and they finally sort of, I think to get rid of him, agreed to let Block Island charge us money, which wasn't affecting the rest of the state, but the Realtors Association, the Builders Association are among the strongest lobbyist groups in the, in the state. And, you know, in my previous position as Director, Department of Environmental Management, we also tried to get something like that on a state level, and I can tell you, the opposition is ferocious, and it's just, you know, we came to the realization, and everybody who has tried it said, don't waste your time and your effort. Now, I don't know, maybe, you know, the economic situation is changing things, and the general assembly is more willing to look at different ways of raising money, but, you know, I know that lobbyists groups between the Realtors and the Builders are going to, they're going to oppose it, you know, very heavily, and my prediction would be it won't work. I think, you know, Scott Bill read the legislation, and, you know, realized, I mean, I think the autonomy that we have is for good practical reasons, but I have to say that we don't, I mean, we're not out there trying to be more autonomous. I mean, we want to work with the town council whenever, you know, we want to work with the town, we think that everybody should be going at this together. We don't take a lot of pride in our autonomy. We don't put a lot of stake in maintaining our autonomy. If there's something that the town council and us should work on together, we want to work on it together. We want, we don't want to say, no, 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 look at our legislation, you can't touch us. I mean, that's not our attitude. And, you know, I guess the argument that because you're autonomous, you should have your own legal counsel. I mean, if roles were reversed, and I was sitting up there, I would think, well, you know, they are, they can be pretty autonomous. One way to make sure they don't get real far off the reservation is to have the same legal counsel. I mean, I think the argument, the autonomy argument really works both ways, and it's a good reason, because of our autonomy, it's a good reason that we use a town solicitor and not our own legal counsel, is my personal opinion. You know, and as far as, well, as I say, Scott Bill read the, you know, the section that gives us the ability to hire legal counsel, but doesn't require us to house legal counsel. And the important part of what he read was the last few words, we're within the limits of available funds. And, you know, from our point of view, there really aren't available funds. Now, again, you know, I was lucky enough to serve the state in a couple of very responsible positions at the Department of Environmental Management, Department of Transportation, and managed, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of bond issued funds, and I feel very strongly, and, you know, I'll browbeat my fellow land board members about it, that those funds, you know, are for capital projects, and I agree that they should, we should use them to buy land, we should use them to improve land, but it should all be capital projects. We should not be paying salaries out of, that's not allowed in most bond issues on a state level. Maybe ours wasn't crafted strictly enough that it would allow us to do it, but, you know, just because we can pay salaries, just because we can, you know, rent an office with it or whatever, doesn't mean we should do it. And, you know, and we try to do things, we do do things pretty much in agreement, and they know that I would vote against and argue strenuously, and most of the other people on the land trust come away to mine a way of thinking that that's not the use of bond funds, because bond funds have to be paid for, you have to pay interest on that money, it's for forward-looking things, it's like a business, it's like the way IRS looks at things, you can capitalize certain things and you can't capitalize other things. To me, if you can't capitalize it, if it's not something you think should be capitalized, you shouldn't spend bond funds on it. I guess that's all I had to say, and, you know, we're, I think we understand the position of council better now. There may be some compromise positions that, you know, that we should, we'll certainly get together and talk about, and maybe come, you know, come back to the council if we think that there's some sort of compromise position that we could work on. But we appreciate your attention and your...
Yeah, I mean, excuse me...
And we certainly appreciate your support of the land trust. I'm, you know, it's one of the best organizations I've ever been involved with, and, you know, I've, over the past few years, I haven't been able to tend a lot of meetings because I've been traveling internationally and all that, but I, you know, I've really enjoyed making sure that I follow what they do and try to help as much as possible, because it is such a great organization of people, and doing a lot of terrific things for Hopkinton.
So, one thing, one thing I learned from your, from your talk tonight was that, I forget about the lobbies that are in place, whether it be the Realtor or the Builders Association, I guess, you know, I guess you don't know until you try with that tax stamp, you know, I guess if we run into an issue with them, we can look at other options for revenue sources, but, you know, I didn't realize that, I guess that that really is what's in place that might prevent you from pursuing that option, I guess. But, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
I think, you know, when we talk to like the people who are up there lobbying on these issues all the time, they're nervous about it because they don't want, they didn't want the lobbies to fight them on bond issue, on the statewide bond issue, which has passed, and various other issues, and, you know, there's become this sort of understanding that they're not going to allow through any new real estate-based taxes, and, but they won't fight anything else, you know, that the people who are interested in land acquisition want to do. So, I think, you know, we were, I think people were nervous about us submitting legislation would upset that and start that whole argument all again that hasn't been around for the last few years. But it might be worth doing, we could look into drafting something, it's pretty simple legislation, and ask our legislators if they'll introduce it.
One suggestion, possibly, Mr. Wood, is maybe just a flat tax, instead of, you know, based on the total amount, you know, whatever, per transaction fee.
That's what it is, but, I mean, that's what they have on Antica and Block Island and Little Compton, it's a, whatever, it's a variable thing, you know, 1% or 2%, but as that is saying, the builders and real estate people are against that. That's what they're in lobbying against. The land transfer fee taxes is a different thing.
We're talking two totally different things.
Every transaction in Hopkinton still collects a land transfer.
She used to come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry, but there's just two separate things that you're talking about.
But I think you, I think you, I mean, I think what he was saying is, instead of what Block Island and Little Compton have are percentages, so they get a certain percentage of every transaction, you're saying maybe just $100 per transaction, whether it's a million-dollar transaction or a $20,000 transaction.
Right, a flat tax like that. So, that might be, that may pique some of the lobby groups, that's all.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Yes, Carol.
I want to just clarify some points. I promise to be brief, which many people say is not possible for me. Couple of things, I think in order for this, it's, you know, we're talking about this, we really don't know the amounts we're talking about. Could I ask, whether it's the town manager, or the Solicitor's Office, or perhaps you, Town Council President, can we have a dollar figure, or what exactly has the land trust cost the town in the last 12 years? We, you know, we're talking about an hour sometimes and 40 hours for another month. We don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I honestly, Carol, don't know.
But, I mean, it shouldn't be difficult, I mean, I know my dearest beloved brother-in-law is a lawyer, and he bills and he's a lawyer for a municipal in New Jersey. I mean, it's not difficult to find out, you know, what percentage was, you know, town council, what percentage was planning board, because then we all know what it is that we're asking, you know? Is it, is it a lot of money? Is it not a lot of money? And just to clarify the point about the pots of money, there's two pots of money that we're talking about. All 39 cities in town have a real estate transfer fee. I don't know if it's 20 to 30%, and 70% goes to the state, 30% goes to the town, and it's up to the town to decide how to spend that. In the past, the land trust has gotten all of it, and now it goes to other worthy things. The other thing we're talking about is enabling legislation that has to get approved at the state level by all the different senators and representatives, and that's where the lobbying comes in. Sylvia, when you're saying that we've always gotten every single bond, and the town council and the residents of Hopkinton have approved, yes, but that's not who's going to be voting on this. It's going to be the entire state. And the lobbyists and the Realtors, Little Compton and Block Island got slipped under the radar before they were paying attention. The builders and builders are never going to allow another flat tax like that to go through for land preservation. And my last comment I would like to make is that I am, I work full-time, I've raised two beautiful daughters through the awesome Charah School Department. I have been a volunteer of this land trust for 12 years. We did not ask for autonomy. The land trust was created, and then you, the town council, interviewed us and appointed us to be on the board. I feel as if we have all this autonomy, and that you want us to all go out and be kings and the land barons, and go out and buy without any, without any participation from the land tr, excuse me, from the town council. We consider ourselves residents of this town, we are residents of this town, and we want to work with you. We do not consider ourselves autonomous. We perhaps have that power, but that's not how we want to use it. We'd like to be, feel that we are respected and honored and treasured by this town, and that you folks would support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I need to comment too.
Okay, Sylvia, go ahead.
When Ed explained about the legislative body not supporting it, that was a misunderstanding when I had a private conversation with one of the members, Marilyn, and I thought you meant the voters. I thought you meant the voters, they didn't, they didn't want you to put it on because the voters might not appreciate it. I had no idea that the legislative body was the one that was nixing it, so I understand that. But maybe we could, we could still see if Brian Kennedy and others are receptive to the idea, but I didn't understand that, so now I do. The other thing is whether it's one hour or 100 hours, we don't have it. That's my problem. So, I won't support, I will not support whether it's one hour or 100 hours, I won't support it, because we don't have 100 or one hour, because we can't get everything done that we need to get done, and then the land trust wants to take from that. That's how I see it. And I see that you have millions, and I understand you want to guard what you have and use it for its primary purpose, but I won't support that. I will support anything I can do to help you get a revenue, but I won't look to my, to the town budget and take from it. I'll work with you somehow, but I want you, I guess what I want is, I want you to hire your own. If you end up having some sort of relationship, or this firm ends up working out something with you, it has to come from your treasury. Even if the town ends up finding a revenue source for you, it still has to, you have to pay, you pick your solicitor, and you pay for your solicitor. That's what I want, and that's what I support. Whether or not we come up with money or not, that's, that's something we can deal with at budget time. So, that's my point.
Thank you, Sylvia. Scott?
Well, first of all, let's be candid that there are people in this town who have been involved in the politics of this town, who, quite frankly, they will make the statement that we've saved enough land in town, I've heard that, and I'm sure some people will know who these people are. And what I think immediately what concerns me is that the way the legislature works, that all legislation has to be submitted by sometime in March, other than that, after that, you have to have unanimous consent. So, what I would hope the land trust will do, or the council, is to try to get this draft legislation and at least talk about submitting it, and how much political capital this council is willing to do to try to get the land trust to financial wherewithal. You know, in politics, it's not a question always whether you win or not, it's whether you're right or you believe that your agenda is in the best interest of the public. Also, the council will be formulating their budget for the next fiscal year, and I know that the land trust runs their own budget, but also whether or not the town of Hopkinton should find a certain level of funding in our budget that'll be put before the voters in June to benefit the land trust. So, that's the immediate two things that I see for the land trust. The legislation is time-sensitive, and I'm not so worried about losing, because you take a lot of hits in politics and you have some wins. Nobody knows that better than me. Also, also, I would say that one of the things that I'm very proud of the town of Hopkinton and all of Western Rhode Island, not only Hopkinton, but Exeter, West Greenwich, all the towns, the selling point of Western Rhode Island is that we're heavily forested, and we have a lot of undeveloped land, and a lot of people from the urban areas are coming to a lot of these areas. My concern was, you know, and I won't get into all the information the solicitor gave us, but there was a concern about a possible conflict. And I'm just saying, when you're on the council, you hear all these different perspectives and all these other type of things, but I think right now, what I'd like to see is us to at least talk about legislation, and whether or not we lose, or the real estate agents, or any builders, or whatever, you know what I mean? What they're going to do politically. And also, also decide as a council where, or what role we should have on the budget for the, from the town budget, what, what level of funding we should give them in the next fiscal year. But that's all I have to say. And also, just to, I believe Block Island, or the town of New Sharm technically, is the only town in Rhode Island that has an elected land trust. You actually have to run for it in an election. I don't believe Little Compton's elected, but Block Island, you actually have to run in an election to be on the land trust of the town of New Sharm. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. I think I'll grab the last word on this one, if I don't mind. As far as, as far as the land trust, you know, basically, I understand that you folks want to use that money strictly for land acquisition, and I appreciate you folks in that effort, but I think you have to look at it more like a business as well. You have some operating expenses that you have, I think you are looking to hire a secretary or administrative person. You know, you noticed the need for that, and I think you're going to notice the need at some point in time for, for your own independent attorney. And quite honestly, the solicitor, when she was contracted six years ago, was for three, three parts of town business, it was the town council, zoning, and planning, that's it. So, to use her services for anything other than that, I can't see fit, but I would, I would hope that you want to look at some other revenue sources and try and, I'd be happy to, to work on it with you. Like I said, maybe a flat tax as opposed to a percentage, might be more palatable for those folks that are against it. But, you know, we have to at least explore some things, and I think you have to, like I said, look at it like a business. There are operating, operating expenses with anything, and you have administrative and you have legal. That's part of it, you know, and I don't think you're going to spend a lot of money. I've talked to the solicitor on how much potentially this money might come up to, 3,000 to 5,000? I mean, you guys have a fair amount of money, and I think you need to allocate it...
Their money has to last us 10 years.
Right, but I, I think, you know, but if you run out, then you, then you come back to us. You say, "Hey, you know, we're out, we tried it." So... Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay.
How to do a business?
Yeah.
Mr. Frank, what, what, what do you get?
If you bought a piece of property, you'd have to hire a lawyer. And, yeah?
revisions to the town subdivision regulations, the town plan of Jim Lambfear. I'll just, if I could, Jim, preface your meeting tonight. I, I went to a planning board meeting a week or so, two weeks ago, just to kind of poke around and see how long, how far they've progressed with the rewriting of the subregulations and regulations, and I thought they may have just scratched the surface, I was totally wrong. They've actually gotten through almost half of what they were supposed to get through, which was very, very pleasing to me. And I thought, based on that progress, that maybe Jim could come and, and give us a heads-up as to what that progress has been, and how far along he's got, and where he's got to go from here, and, and just enlighten the council on the progress. You know, and this money, I think, that we set aside for the last budget season was about $60,000 to rewrite these, and I know Jim's office and, and the planning board are going to prepare this, these changes, I guess, right, for that particular consultant to get this thing up and running. So, if you would, I guess, give us a heads-up on that, Jim, I'd appreciate it.
You're talking, Frank, about the rewriting of the zoning rights, right?
Yes.
Okay, when you say the 60,000?
Yes.
That's not, that wasn't money, sort of like a rewriting of the subdivision stuff?
I think a subreg's in there.
Well, I think the subdivision stuff falls within the zoning stuff to a certain extent, but that's what you meant, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good evening. I wasn't sure exactly what you wanted from me tonight, but I'm prepared to almost give you anything. In the event that you were going to throw some bouquets out for doing a good job here, I wanted to make sure that the individual who was responsible for most of the heavy lifting on this project, my assistant, Linda St. Amore, who has a master's degree, by the way, and did a lot of heavy, heavy work on preparing the subdivision regulations. We've been working on that, actually, as a department, for several years now. And due to the fact that applications have been a little infrequent, we've had a rare opportunity to do all of this stuff in-house. So, we, you know, the people that you're paying, the two people in this department right now, are responsible for doing a rewrite of the subdivision regulations. Most towns do sub that work out. So, we've, we've been able to do it in-house, okay, at a considerable savings.
The other thing, let's just give kudos to the planning board, because one thing I'll say about the planning board is they never shy away from hard work, God bless them. And they have long, difficult meetings, and what they've been doing is fitting in the review of what Jim and Linda are doing at the, as an agenda item at the end of their meetings. I mean, they've been very diligent about making sure that they apportion time for that. It's not easy, you, I mean, you guys know how hard it is, they're volunteers, and, you know, they've got long meetings and difficult work to do, and they're still doing this, so God bless them for that.
And you need to know, we haven't seen anything. So, I haven't seen anything.
Well, no, because it's not done.
Right, right, so I haven't, so I don't, you know, I can't really discuss it because I haven't seen anything, so...
Right.
But you could tell us the process.
Yeah, you've been through seven articles, I guess, right, rewriting?
Yes, the, the planning board has been through the first eight articles, and there are probably going to be a total of 18 articles altogether. And the next group that we hand out to them will be in January, we're going to be handing them out, articles 12 through 15, because they're relatively short, so we can get through that. Articles 16 and 17, a little bit longer, we're not sure right now if we're going to give them one article per month on that, or maybe double up and give them two. As you know, they're a very ambitious group, they're a very, very studious group, and they're not afraid of tackling two articles in a, in a meeting, so they, they want to get through it as well, because, you know, quite frankly, it is very dry material, it's hard work, it's not, it's not pleasant...
No pitches.
But it's very important. It's very, it's very important, though, because it enables us to do, you know, good land reviews, land development reviews, which will benefit the town, so...
Could you maybe, Jim, just explain for me and the council, I guess, after this is all reviewed, 18 articles or so, what transpires after that? What's the next step, so to speak, after that?
Yes, once, once we get a complete document that's acceptable to the planning board, the planning board will go through the formal adoption process, which will include a public hearing. We will advertise, the document's probably too long to advertise in the paper in its totality, there will be a little, little blurb in the paper, if you will, okay, stating the highlights of the changes that are in there and whatnot, and that if they, if the public wants to look at the complete document, they can do so at the town clerk's office or at the planning department, get a, get a full flavor of it. But there'll be a public hearing, and then the planning board will adopt them. It's not something, let's see how I put this, most of what, what's in the subdivision regulations is not in the purview of the town council, it's the planning board's regulations. However, there are a few elements of this, which Scott is helping us out with, such as cluster, residential compounds, et cetera, development plan review. Those components of that are actual ordinances that the town council approves, so we can't make changes to them. Whatever's in our subregs has to be consistent with our ordinances. So, if we, if the planning board decides to make some changes to those, which we haven't yet, but in the event that we do, they would have to go to the council first for changes at the, at a higher level, then we can incorporate them in our subregs, as we did with the residential compound. If you recall, when we, we worked that, the council acted on it first, and then we made our subregs consistent with that, so...
Okay, so how many of those separate pieces that we, we would potentially have to look at? Say maybe three or four?
Three or four.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Jim? Sylvia?
I, I forgot when you came on, when you were hired, Linda might have been here. Were you here when we, as a town, had, there was a hearing before the town council on conservation, was it conservation development? I forget, I think it was just called conservation development, you remember that? And, were you here then?
I was not, no.
Oh, okay.
I came just after.
That was something that was not supported by the townspeople, and ultimately didn't, just didn't happen. So, I would just caution that we keep those sorts of things in mind, that as you go through it, just like you said, make sure that whatever it is you do, it has to, and I'm sure Scott will be on top of it, has to conform with what we already have, or if there's anything new and different, then we take it up. Yeah, okay.
Scott, do you have anything for Jim?
No, not at all.
Mr. Wood?
Nope, pause.
I just had one more quick comment, Jim. I guess, do you have to, once this is all finalized, do you have to amend the comprehensive plan based on these changes, or is that not something you have to do?
No.
Okay.
No. The subregs have to be consistent with the comp plan.
Okay, and that's what you're doing, okay.
Right, the hierarchy in town is the comprehensive plan, as far as planning goes, comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, subregs, they all have to be consistent with one another.
So, we, we tackled the comp plan, now you just have to make everything mold to that plan?
Right, the subregs have to be consistent with our zoning ordinance and our comprehensive plan.
Is there, like, a schedule, a deadline, that you have to have it? Because it was always...
No.
No?
The sub, the subregs were last amended in 2000, by the way, so it's 12 years ago. Like I said, we're fortunate that we have the time now to really devote to it and get it done.
Well, I want to thank you, Linda, the planning board, for their hard efforts, and keep, keep continuing, we need those done, so please.
Those magic fingers are taking away.
Thank you.
Must be.
Yes.
Again, it's not just formatting and quick fingers, okay? Linda did a lot of research in other communities.
I have no doubt, yeah.
And again, as you pointed out, that Linda's been here for, you know, a good 10 years, and with this planning board, she knows all of the issues that the planning board has struggled with, and so when she did her research, she picked out things that maybe could address those things. So, she did a lot of fundamental research and a lot of substantive work in that comp plan as well, so, I mean, anybody's, any credits to be given out, it's to Linda right there.
Thank you, thank you, Jim and Linda.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the last public forum, anybody wishing to speak? No. Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
Mad, uh, Madam President, uh, excuse me, Mr. President, I move that the Hopkinton Town Council adjourn in memory of those who died in the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut, the last few days.
Second. Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.